It's all the order, the committee of the whole meeting for May 28th. First order of business is roll call.
Miller, Risotto, Beck, Knopf.
Here.
Chancet, Salvati.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley. Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
And McFadden.
Here.
Okay, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Next on the agenda is a reminder to please speak into the microphone for BATV. Next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. We're going to switch items five and six, since there will be probably a lot more discussion on what is currently five than what is six. Get that out of the way. You okay with that? Okay. Next up would be matters from the public. Do you want to say anything tonight, Mark?
He's got nothing.
Then we'll move right on to number six, which is actually number five. Ordinance 19-43, annexing Roberts Lane, 503 Roberts Lane.
Am I doing it or do it the way?
Do you want to start off, Marty?
Scott.
Okay. All right, this is.
You've learned well, Grasshopper.
I don't want to steal your thunder if you wanted it. So this is a continuing saga of annexing the various properties that are surrounded by the city limits. This is one on Roberts, one of the last ones on Roberts. This plat was actually done some time ago, but, and we contacted this property a number of times, and they have not responded to our requests. This one actually has an agreement that compels them to annex by their utility agreement, but, you know, we followed through and they did not annex it. So this is actually an older plat. We've actually surrounded, everything around here is annexed now, so this is the last piece that has not been annexed at this point.
So they were supposed to annex with their...
Once they were contiguous, they were required to annex back in the 90s, I believe. And they did not, and here we are today.
It's a good thing we're getting all these cleared out. Anybody have any questions? Somebody here to make a motion?
I recommend approval to City Council, ordinance 19-43, annexing 503 Roberts Lane.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I can go on.
Can't go on consent because it's a public meeting part, so we have, this one we have to allow on regular agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Next up would be ordinance 19-28, amending the text of the zoning code. Continued discussion. You want to start?
This is number three, and we don't have a lot of people here, again, for it, so... You want to?
Okay, yeah. So this is being brought back for further discussion. With the memo, or the most recent memo, we did include kind of a survey of what other municipalities in the area have done, basically all of our surrounding neighbors. And it varies a lot, but essentially, some do have some absolute number. Some are as strict as Aurora, which says one garage, one shed only. Others only rely on the, on basically a limitation set by either the required yards or by the overall lot size provided. So, like I said, there's a number of different ways that it's been handled through the surrounding municipalities. We did provide some numbers just to give you some ideas of kind of what standard building sizes would be for different accessory structures. Obviously, there's no standard size in most cases, other than maybe for a shed, but that varies a lot. And we did do a little bit of a comparison of the difference between a system that would do a 10% of a lot area example, which was in the current draft of the code, versus an example of a situation that uses a required rear setback area. So that's a difference from provided, which basically a provided yard might be much larger, but most of the, or the codes that were sampled that did use basically a larger size based on a certain yard that it's in for an accessory structure, those all used the required. So that's why we did that particular example there. So, in the memo, we did outline a couple of different ways that you could approach this in terms of, if you want to kind of give a consensus on different types of regulations, and we did just basically recommend continued discussion of this item, and if there's a consensus, then it should move ahead. Otherwise, it can just be continued discussion at committee.
So out of all of these, which is most similar to the complaints that we have been actually having?
Well, I think it depends, I mean...
Well, let me back it up. How many complaints have we been having on this issue?
I think generally, we don't have a total number in terms of past cumulative years, but we've had a number of different complaints, I think, overall, but...
We had not been monitoring that, honestly. I mean, that's not something that we had been tracking. So, I mean, you know, there have been complaints, but we don't have a quantitative number for you.
And what were those complaints about?
Size, location, bulk of the building, those type of things typically.
And the ones with the size, how big were they?
Again, I can't, I can't recall exactly, you know, what the, what the true numbers are. I mean, do you have anything to recall?
No, I mean, most of the ones that we, that I've heard about are the ones that are in the 1,000 to 1,100 square foot range generally.
Because as I was reading through this, it's all over the board, and that's why I was trying to figure out. I know Dan had kind of thrown it out there a few weeks ago. Who would we kind of mirror? And St. Charles was one of the ones that would, could kind of mirror, but kind of thinking along those lines. I'm not sure which one we would want to mirror, because we're all over the board, and instead of, I think what we've generally been able to not figure out, like, the right number, because I want to, I don't think we know what the, what the problem.
Right.
Actually is, so that we could craft it towards that.
Yeah, in terms of like the number situation, I think you can see that the ones that don't have a number usually are relying on another set of, basically the area calculation. I think essentially with some of the situations where you could probably have a larger structure, sometimes it's just height of some of these garages when they're larger. Sometimes it is area, the length of the building essentially, along a property line. So, I mean, there's, there's a number of different scenarios where you could have issues. You have the drainage issue where you've got multiple structures that haven't incorporated where drainage could happen on a property or near easements or creating situations where they're, you know, cumulatively having an effect. So, so, yeah, there's still a number of different ways you could approach this.
So the ones with the height issues where people have said it's too tall for the yard, isn't there already existing zoning for certain structures regarding zoning for the height?
There is a, one of the changes that is in the current draft is basically, we do have in the code right now where over 15 feet in height, you start having to increase the distance from your setback, or your property setback line, as you go taller. So right now, it's for every two feet in height you increase, or fraction thereof, you have to move it a foot away from the property line. And, you know, some of the districts, that's a three-foot setback right now, then starts increasing, you know, three or four feet if you're at 20 feet, for example.
But there's no height requirement or for an extra?
There is a overall height limitation in the code.
25 feet, I think is the maximum you can do.
Yeah, I thought there was kind of something in there.
Yes.
Anyone else? Mark?
So I guess, yeah, I know we've been going back and forth on this lot. I think I was always concerned, you know, 10%, if I look at that, I'm concerned because you run into a situation where somebody puts a three-car garage and then they can't, if they have a 7,200 square foot lot, then they can't even put in a shed at that point, because they're going to encroach on that. The percentage of required rear setback is very restrictive then in some of those lots. So I thought what we were doing was too restrictive. I'd be okay pushing up the percentage closer to 15%, which gives people a lot more flexibility that they're able to do something in their yard that they don't have right now.
Flexibility for what?
A three-car garage. You know, somebody with a three-car garage in a 7,200 square foot lot, in the smaller lots, we have a lot of small lots centered all over town. And if people are starting to take more advantage of, hey, you know what, I'm going to have my kids live with me, but I'm going to make a bigger garage and make a two-story garage, but I can't do it now, because now I'm restricted, because I already have a shed, and now I've got to tear down my shed, or whatever ends up happening. I think that we've, 10% just seems a little too small for me, especially with all the stuff that's very close to town, that is very small lots.
So, I mean, if I'm hearing it correctly, it's, it's making an apartment unit, in essence, a grandmother's quarters.
Sure.
Mother-in-law apartment or something, making that legal throughout the town.
Well, I mean, it's theoretically fine right now to do that. It's just not putting such a restriction on it that every single one of these people that wants to do this, that's in a small lot, is going to be here before us asking for a variance, which I'm, I'm never going to say no to somebody that's doing it for that reason. So why put us, why put them through the expense of having to do all the advertising and everything that they're going to have to do and notifications? Let's just make it a little easier, but then it doesn't allow somebody to, you know, fill up their entire yard with proper, with structures.
I don't mean to have it a back and forth between you and I, but I guess just hearing that, though, it seems to me that it would potentially open the door for a lot of, you know, businesses to develop, be, you know, what is it? You know, people renting out their spaces. And so, I mean, we did just cover an ordinance with that, saying, you know, we're going to permit that to happen, because people are doing it legitimately, but it looks like we're kind of opening the door to perhaps people saying, well, I'm doing this for my grandmother, and now all of a sudden they're renting out an apartment. It just, just seems that it gets to be an awful lot for our, our staff to have to try to cover, which if it's done legitimately, that's fine, but I, I don't see a problem if that's someone's intent, to have them at least talk to their neighbors and, and go through a little bit of a process, so we have some sort of control over it. And I'm not saying not to do it.
If somebody's living in there, doesn't that then become a dwelling rather than an accessory structure?
I would think so.
And is the proposal that we're looking at accessory structure, not dwelling?
Correct.
So there, I think, is where we can draw a distinction between a nanny pod or something going in. This isn't for, this isn't for residential dwelling. It's either a work-at-home office on the second floor with the garage underneath, or lots of riding lawn mowers and pool accessories.
To, just to kind of clarify, basically in the R1M and R1H district, we do allow accessory dwelling units to be approved through what's called administrative use permit. That is not to the level of conditional use, which requires a 500-foot notice to all the, the property owners within 500 feet, you know, with notice to the paper and so forth. Administrative use is basically, it can be no notice, but for dwelling, accessory dwelling units, the granny flats, we do require basically neighbors, the immediately adjacent neighbors plus one, to be notified just by mail. So that is one option that could be considered. I did reference the Elburn scenario in the packet, and basically, they have a, you know, a maximum size allowed, but if you need to go larger, they have the conditional use process. One thing, one option the council could consider would be to say, maybe just administrative use permit for over a certain size, basically to have that relief valve of a public process. Neighbors are notified, but it's not the full scale of 500 feet, which you would see for a full variance or conditional use.
Yeah, I looked at this and I went home and thought about it for a while, and then looked at, you know, what 10% would be on my lot, and it'd be really interesting to see my wife's reaction when I wanted to build a six-car garage in my backyard, because that's what would fit, 10%. Granted, I have a little bit bigger yard than a lot of the ones in downtown, but I also think that to restrict it down at 10%, if you got a five or a six or a 7,000 square foot lot, that's going to be right on the property line, or very close to the property line, so you're probably going to have to apply for a variance anyway to get something that big in your backyard. And if anything over 15 feet tall requires it to be further away from the setbacks, then you're going to be, again, having to apply for a variance for it. So I don't think we're going to change a lot of the small lot restrictions. I think we're going to give people in a lot my size, or anything over 10,000 square feet, you're going to give them a lot more opportunity to build a bigger accessory shed, or garage, or whatever you want to call it. And I know that a lot of people that I've talked to that are thinking about the grandma, nanny shed type thing in their backyard, they're all going to be single level, especially if it's for somebody that's older. They're not going to be climbing upstairs to get to the second floor, so it's not going to be built over a garage. It'll be a single floor. Amazon's got two of them out now that you can buy and build in a weekend. It's almost as bad as an Ikea furniture box. They can deliver it, and you can have it up in, you know, 36 hours.
With an Allen wrench.
Yeah.
Scott? One option, just to muddy the works a little bit more, since we have plenty of options in front of us. One option would be is to say, if we went with the 10%, but then give a minimum amount that's allowed in any district. So you could say that, you know, it's, it's 10% or say 600 square feet, which would be a 24 by 24-foot garage, so that you could put a 24 by 24-foot garage, as long as you meet the setbacks in any district. That would be an option to consider, too. So that way, you wouldn't have to worry about the 10% so much on the smaller lots.
Oh, so you're saying that if I just put up a shed, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter?
Well, it would matter, you know, ultimately, you could have, as long as, well, at some point, you know, the physical limitations of the lot are going to limit you because of the setbacks and everything else, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that you could have a minimum of a two-car garage, and maybe a little bit more, depending on, you know, what, what your situation is, depending on, you know, whether you build a 22 by 22 or a 24 by 24-foot garage, and if you have some extra room left over, then you could put a shed on there, too, so. If you had a minimum standard, say 600 square feet, or 10%, whichever is more, then that would give you that flexibility for the smaller lots.
I think that would be very interesting when you got down to some of the really small lots. And the last one I lived on was 58 feet wide, and we never put another garage up, because there was no place to put it.
And then again, if they have a problem, then there's always the variance process.
Anything jumping out to anybody?
I like that idea very much. I think it solves a lot of the problems, especially for, I mean, Mark, I mean, the biggest issue is the small lots.
Yeah.
Correct? So, you know, if you're saying 10% of total, of total lot size for accessory structures, and then calling out except for garages, which you can have a maximum of, you know, of this, or a minimum of this for, that solves for that easily. I mean, obviously with limitations of the lot, of the lot size.
If it's that small, and 10% doesn't cut it, how are you going to wedge in 24 by 24?
And you may not be able to. I mean, if you have a 40, if you have a 40-foot lot, and you have, you know, five-foot setbacks on your side, you know, you're going to be kind of constrained, depending on what else is in your yard, and there's easements and things like that. So, you know, I mean, there, there are going to be lots that are functionally impossible to do some of that. So...
Elliot?
Yeah, I mean, the last time we went through this, I made the motion just because, again, I was not looking to have a ton of red tape in this, especially if we didn't have specific cases or the specific kind of, I guess I want to say, a pattern of cases that we were trying to solve for, and that's why I was not liking the two or three number of units. And I still don't think that's the right approach. So I would definitely lean towards the percentage side. You know, the only thing that I saw in, in this updated, you know, collection of the other township's ordinances is the call-out of the rear yard, which, just again, trying to think of...
Neighborhoods.
We have a caller.
Dan?
Okay.
Possibly? Hello?
Try to turn the mic away so we don't get...
Hi there, I'm here.
Go ahead, caller, you're on the air.
The, that's Dan. The, the only thing that I saw in this that I liked a little bit was the, was the rear yard call-out as opposed to, you know, the entire lot. And that just gets into, I think, a little bit more of some nuance, but I would still say, yeah, I think, I think as much as that might be something trying to preserve the street value, the curbside value of the neighborhood, I would still not like to put more red tape in this. I do think it's a good thing that we have this ability to maybe draw a line, and if you're trying to do something beyond that, and there's certainly other cases as well where you're up against the easements that you would need to come in anyways for a variance, then we rely on those and not try to add more to this. So I would, I think I would still stay with the 10% of, of the whole lot.
Keep going around and see if we can get everybody to say something.
We're talking about the accessory structures.
Is there enough room for me to put a gas, a gas station on my property?
One pump.
Yeah, nothing up that.
Nick Drew? I would say, I mean, I lean towards it being more restricted and have people come for a variance. I don't see a problem with that, but that kind of solves, meets in the middle, so I'd be either one of those, but I don't know if I want to open it up bigger.
Yeah, I would throw in, in a similar boat, not entirely because of dealing with a ward issue in which one neighbor's got a whole bunch of, whenever it rains, his side yard turns all swampy, and the root of the problem appears to be 10, 11 years ago, the neighbor behind him put up a giant two-story garage, which changed the way everything drains and water flows, and now whenever he gets heavy rained, his yard turns into a swamp, and, you know, the other guy's, the guy with the big garage is fine. So I, I'm leaning towards, we've got to keep tabs on it, and if it means being a little more restrictive and having people ask for a variance, to give us the opportunity to review that kind of thing, I think that makes sense. Because in this instance, you know, when the guy put up the big garage, it was, it was all fine, and it would even conform within the 10% that we've got going now. But to have us look at it now and be aware of all the drainage issues and other things that need to be dealt with, when you're doing something like that, I think makes sense and protects the neighbors around him who now have to deal with the wetness.
I'm a fan of Scott's, of what Scott was saying. And it addresses Mark's concern, you know, with a, with a smaller, the smaller lot sizes, it keeps the 10%. If that's it, you know, no, no number of structures, that for me is, is a good thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Or not. No thoughts on the matter?
No thoughts. So would anybody like to make a motion?
Guess I'm trying to figure out what that would be.
Do we want to have a minimum size in it? Do we want to leave it at 10%?
Scott, what would your recommendation seem? Everybody seems to be kind of going...
I would say, you know, the restriction would be 600, you know, accessory structures could be up to 600 square feet in area, or 10% of the, of the lot area, whichever is larger.
Question. The 600 square feet, that's footprint area, not total square.
Not, not floor area, it would just be the footprint.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the City Council, ordinance 1928, with the changes that it's 10% with a minimum of 600 square feet.
Second.
Is that whichever is greater?
Whichever is greater.
Correct.
And we're also keeping in the restriction of no shipping containers. That'll stay. We're all okay with that. I think that was the only other thing that we could change.
That, that is reflected in the current ordinance, in section three, number four.
Motion and a second? Voice vote.
Just your voice vote.
Voice vote?
His call. Just your voice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Okay, pass. You want to talk about it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll change my mind next week.
Well, we have...
Make the motion before he does.
We have five, four.
Either one of you two say anything, Barry. I might have to keep this over by...
Okay.
The next one up will be ordinance 1944, revising Title V of the Potavium Municipal Code regarding gambling.
Stan?
With his gas station, he can put in sweepstakes machines.
And a hotel.
Can someone else facilitate this?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take it. I'll turn it over to the chief.
Okay, I think the best way to go through this is just to describe what happened. Around February of this year, it was reported to us that one of the local gas stations may have been operating an unlicensed video gaming terminal. So we sent some of our investigators over there, made contact with the manager at the, the business. There was a machine that looked substantially similar in appearance to a video gaming terminal. Asked and inquired about it. It did not have state or local permit stamps on it, and so the manager proceeded to tell the investigators that he had been approached by a subject who came in, offered to install the machine for free with no, no additional charges, and he would share the revenue. The manager knew about the prohibition on video gaming terminals and gas stations per our current ordinance. They are prohibited under 3-26 of our current municipal code. He said it was not a video gaming terminal, it had passed legal muster, and it was called a sweepstakes machine. And to describe the differences, basically, in the two machines is that, one, you have to put money in to play the games of chance, and in this one, you did not have to. You could just play a game for free and potentially win coupons. But you could also play games of chance if you put money into the machine. He said that the, the individual had told him there was some presidential case law and other circuits, not in the 16th Circuit, which presides over King County, but that it was legal, and it had passed legal muster, and the manager agreed to install it. So we took that information and told him we were going to do some research of our own. He volunteered to take the machine out. We told him, no, wait, let, you know, let's see what we, what the state gaming authorities have to say about this issue. So he left it in there for a short period of time, and actually, by the second, the time we returned to talk to him a little bit more about it, he had already removed it. I think he was nervous. But anyways, essentially, what he had told us was basically true, that the gaming board was seeing these machines, they're essentially a loophole in the Video Gaming Act, and several courts had ruled that they were not considered to be video gaming terminals, per se, and therefore, they were not under the purview of the state gaming board. So what they recommended was that municipal entities enact an ordinance that strictly defines and prohibits these types of sweepstakes machines. So that's why we're before you tonight. Attorney General's office did research it. The, the draft ordinance revisions are from their office, so you would recommend that you approve this revision to the Title V.
I think it's really interesting, because I think you go back into the very early history of gaming in the US, and that's what they were called, were sweepstakes machines. Where you could walk into a, you know, soda fountain, sit there, and this is what they called them, so they could get around the law, you know, pre-1900. I think it's pretty funny that that's what they're called now.
So one of the key differences between these two machines is that the video gaming terminals that are governed by the gaming board are plugged into the state, so the state knows how much money is going in and out of those machines. These things are totally unregulated. Not even the manager of the store could tell us how much money was going into the machine. He was just getting a check cut every so often by this, this entity that's out of Irving Park Road in Chicago. out of Irving Park Road in Chicago.
I mean, just, to that, chief, the state still controls when it goes on and off during the day also.
Not these machines.
Not these machines, but.
Correct.
But the ones that are.
Yes.
Run by the state. I mean, eight o'clock in the morning.
They're all dialed into the state by computer.
Everything. So, they have complete control over it. Here, this guy is just flying.
Interesting. Marty?
So, I noticed there was some newspaper articles in Huntley and some other places. It seems like there's a concerted effort of these type of machines going into surrounding locales. It wasn't just a one-off.
The gaming, the gaming we coordinated with said, yes, they're seeing a proliferation of these machines around the northern Illinois metropolitan, Chicagoland metropolitan area.
And others appear to be.
And the state law just hasn't caught up with them yet.
And others appear to be doing this same sort of type.
Correct, yes. Yeah, they sent us actually a couple of draft ordinances that we forwarded to Attorney General's office, so he reviewed those as well. I think Palatine was one, Hoffman Estate was another. They're big in Cook County.
Mark?
Yeah, I mean, this came up obviously a month or so ago. Yeah, I'd rather not have any, so I'm definitely on board with getting rid of these.
Anyone else?
Yeah, me.
Mayor?
I just want to share with you, the last couple of weeks, I've been inundated with interesting requests from would-be people wanting to cite video gaming machines in Batavia. I had two that want to open up video gaming salons or storefronts where they would have the machines and then just serve coffee, and maybe would have a, a little case at the back where they'd have some cool beer, but they're not really wanting to even sell liquor. They just would like to have the gaming machines. And one of those is out on Randall, one of the locations was on Randall Road, and the other one was in downtown Batavia. I'm not going to name sites. Then I had a very prominent downtown Batavia business contact me last week, and they would like to open up a video gaming area as part of their, their business. They're very well occupied and visited in Batavia every day, over on the east side. It's about as far as I want to go, as far as identifying them. But, so they're all saying, well, what's our next step? And so, we'd say, well, you're going to have a conditional use in your pocket before you can put gaming in. So, then the question is, well, how do we go about filing for that? So, I think we're going to see some more stuff here relatively quick about people wanting to expand the gambling. If you were to ask me, why is we suddenly having all this gambling? There seems to be, the folks that are involved in the business seem to indicate that one of the things that their audience or their customers is coming from is senior living communities. And they note that Batavia, we have four, with a fifth one now under construction. And so, there was, one of the calls I got was some folks wanted to locate in some of the vacant storefrontages out there, probably in front of the Walmart, and take up one of those as a location to put themselves in close proximity to the senior living community. So, I'm just sharing this with you, because I think this is going to be something you guys and gals are going to have an opportunity to make some votes or decisions on in the near term, because if they come into Scott's office and want to file a petition for a conditional, it's the conditional use, isn't it? Yeah. Conditional use, you know, I guess we have to run them through the process. But I've got three right now that are telling me that they want to come in.
That would also likely require revisions to the municipal code. Currently, it's fairly restrictive in scope. It only authorizes liquor establishments that pour and serve, essentially class A and D licenses, taverns or restaurants, truck stops is another authorized location, and then fraternal or veterans organizations. So, our standard gas stations would not apply, nor would our packaged liquor sales stores, and we've had a number of inquiries from both of those types of businesses.
So, I, you know, I just would suggest too, that we, if we're going to get involved in this, we, we need to review our current ordinance, because I've already been told by some of the folks that are in here chit-chatting with me that Batavia has a lower price and license fee than some other towns. And that, you know, if we're going to get into the business, we probably should raise our license fee a little bit. And I think we'd have to have, you know, the staff do a survey for us, and I guess it would be illustrated at that point that we are not the highest ones in the area. As you know, we, we license the guy providing the machine, who's bringing it in here from wherever he's bringing it in. And then the local one only pays a small fee, right? 25 bucks a machine or something like that?
I believe the, the license fee for the business is $1,000, and then it's $25 per terminal.
Right.
Up to a maximum of five terminals per establishment.
I think you're right, chief. But anyway, I'm told that that $1,000 is getting on the lower end now, and there's others that are charging more than that for their, their license. So, this is, using this as a little educational opportunity with the council, so you know what's coming and, you know, where we should be looking, because, you know, if we're going to do it, I think you probably should charge a pretty healthy fee for what we're doing here.
Scott?
Well, I think the question becomes, do we want to have gaming units in every stinking storefront in Batavia? You know, I mean, that's, I mean, or do we want to restrict it? You know, I mean, to Mark's point, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of this to begin with.
I'm not either. I'm just saying that you're going to get asked for it.
Right, but, you know, but I don't, you know, seeing someone set up in a storefront in Walmart and having trolley service over to the, you know, to the homes over there, that's just, I mean, it's predatory. And I, you know, I, it just doesn't sit right with me.
Mike?
Some people might think it's predatory, but other people thinking that it's, you know, the older folks have lost, I'm sure, living in these homes, have lost a lot of their friends, a lot of their family, and, and this is just something to, you know, give them some excitement, something to do. I mean, I'm not defending it or anything.
Sure.
I'm just putting out another perspective. I just don't need to put you on the spot, chief. What are, what are your thoughts on these, these little boutiques going in that have five machines and specific, they're just dedicated to the terminals?
Well, ultimately, obviously, it's a, it's a, it's a policy decision for the council to make, and probably it's, to some extent, it's values-based, and I think you have people who fall on both sides of that. But from a strictly public safety, law enforcement perspective, when we did the research initially, and then our experience since we've had the ordinance enacted in the community, was really that they caused no problems for us. Even anecdotally, we didn't really get any stories from any other communities that organized crime came in and took over. That's why we're worried about these things we're here talking about tonight, but the video gaming terminals that are licensed and monitored by the state, we're not concerned about those things, and nor has any other community expressed any concerns or any negative experiences in that regard. The storefronts are a little bit different, you know, that's, that's something we'd have to take a look at. We don't, that's currently obviously not allowed per ordinance. But I, again, some of the communities that we surveyed had those, and they did not have any statistical or anecdotal references of negative outcomes.
So, I guess, lastly, my question would be, the city, like, what kind of revenue is generated from these machines? That we don't know.
I don't think it's a lot. I can get you that number. Peggy told me last, when I asked that, kind of that quaint same question a couple of weeks ago when all this started happening. The Speedway gas station has been the biggest boom for that of anything we've had.
And if I remember right, I think Speedway was almost in total, the all the other ones that are in town.
Right.
Equal that one place.
And you got to surmise that's because of the trucks, the trucks that are, that are coming through.
Speedway and Crosstown were the two biggest when those motors were pulled before. I'm sorry if you're.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I definitely agree with Scott. I'm, I'm not trying to force values down anyone's throat, but in the end of the day, I mean, I don't want to see our town become another casino. You know, I, go, go south, if that's what you're looking for. It's not that far away. I hear what you're saying, Mike, and I respect the fact that, you know, yeah, there's some people that are just, you know, they're, they're not regular habitual, but they're, they're just having some fun, and I respect that. Again, it's not that far away. I do tend to think that these tend to be more predatory. When you're targeting that, like that, I mean, it's, yeah. The vote happened before I came, or the council, and I would have been a no when that was up, so.
So, regardless of that, we kind of merged into two different issues.
I know, I know, sorry.
There's, there's video gaming, which it kind of sounds like we maybe, in light of what the mayor's presenting, maybe ought to put that back on the agenda at some point again for some more discussion, is kind of, kind of what I'm hearing. There's lots of people have lots to say, so that's something.
You'll get it when they file their applications to come in and try to get conditional use to put them in.
And then, you know, with regards to this current ordinance, I mean, I think these things being completely unregulated like they are is just ripe for abuse, and we, we should absolutely be passing this ordinance along. Anybody else? All right, with that, I'd make a motion that we recommend city council ordinance 1944 revising Title V of the Batavia Municipal Code regarding gambling.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion carries.
Dan still there? Dan, are you still there? Hello?
Yep.
Was.
I hope he didn't crash.
Good evening.
Sorry, hang, why she at the parking lot?
And we'll move on to resolution 19-063R approving materials package bid in the amount of $91,768 to Substation Enterprises Incorporated for the Paramount Park Distribution Substation Upgrade.
This year, the, we passed earlier this year, substation, the Paramount Substation, we have a 30-year-old switchgear and transformer, and one that's about 18 years old. So, we passed one that in the northeast substation, we are building a new switchgear and, and transformer, and that, when done, will take the place of the old transformer at the Paramount Substation. And when we do that, when we get that one online, we will then refurbish, and this is basically just the refurbishing of the younger, the less old, the 18-year-old transformer and substation at Paramount. We're looking to refurbish it. This is only giving, this is only furnishing materials and the structural steel for the housing of that switchgear and transformer at the Paramount. And that's all this is, this is for, so it's pretty, pretty standard stuff. So, Gary, did I miss anything?
Nope, you got it.
Anyone have a comment?
I know a sir from Alabama. Do they have local offices too, or they?
A lot of these electrical industry is nationwide. I mean, and if they had local office, they'd be serving comment and comment only. I mean, that's, that's the way the electric industry is really nationwide with respect to that stuff. Transformers come out of Mississippi or, I can't remember, but that's not uncommon.
Scott?
I mean, with, the bid was well under what the engineer's estimate was. Is there a reason that you think that we were so, I mean, I know we typically try and be conservative as far as our estimates, but that seems to be, it's $47,000 under, on a, you know, on a $130,000 estimate.
You know, and Alderman O'Brien asked me earlier today, we talked on the phone, and, you know, are we comfortable with this company? We have past experience with this company. They've performed well. Why this particular bid is below the cost estimate? The engineers basically have a whole, several sets of packages, and then they, then they give their estimates for each of those packages. My guess for you is that this package just happened to be estimated high. Our engineers are fully supportive of this company, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Love it.
Well, the next, say that, remember that the next time.
Budget amendment, yeah, right.
So, there'll be more things coming at us regarding this. So, anybody else? Anyone care to make a motion?
Moved?
Second.
Motion by Mazzola, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. So, we'll just leave that on the consent agenda. Thank you, Gary.
Move on to project status. Have anything on status that they need to inform us about?
Got any projects?
Think we're all good.
Avenue Chevy's almost down, if it's not down completely today, so.
Did they have an underground tank out there that they had to remove, or was that above ground with just a pad that it was? I know they had a gas pump out there.
I think it was above ground.
Above ground? Okay, so they didn't, didn't have to do any underground removal. Had somebody asked me about that, and I didn't think it was underground.
Till they start digging and find something.
No, that would be at the old property.
Scott, they must have done borings out there also, right?
They assume they did.
The raising canes, I would think.
I would assume they did, yeah.
And so, if they had found something, we'd, we'd know about it. Any kind of contaminants in the soil?
Doesn't mean they're not going to when they start digging, because, you know, the boring's.
We know that.
So, I mean, how that goes.
Was there, there was a farm on that corner before that, right?
Yes, sir.
Marty? Speaking of new businesses, Riverside, I saw the, coming in. I saw the lights were on. I don't know if.
They're assembling their tables.
We're doing finals tomorrow.
Okay.
Awesome. Looks pretty cool. One second.
Yep.
It really does. Anybody else?
I got a couple of things on the other.
Okay. Move on to others.
I'll just give you all a heads up as to what's coming. This could be a lively summer. I have been contacted by the Batavia High School sports boosters, and they want to come before you here in the near term, and they would like to put on a presentation about allowing them the ability to launch fireworks during the 2019 Batavia High School football season, every time the Bulldogs score a touchdown. And so, the fire department, myself and Chief Yule, have been in some preliminary discussions about this. I guess my immediate reaction to it is, you know, I'm a big football, and I don't know, I'm not big, I'm a big Batavia fan, so I'm all for them trying to do whatever it is they like to do out there. I've told the folks that I think it would maybe be okay, but we got to have some understanding. We're not having some of these fireworks that go, boom, you know, and wake up the whole neighborhood at 10 o'clock at night because somebody just scored a touchdown, or, and of course, we got the boys of the Bulldogs sitting here with us, but they want to add that as part of the program this year. It's something new, and they're going to come in and ask you about it. So, I told them, I said, well, this is only going to be a decision of the members of the city council. It's not going to be, the mayor and the city staff are not going to be making this one. We'll give some guidance to it, but you guys get to make the decision as to whether or not you want to let them fire the fireworks. So, just be thinking about it, because it's coming your way.
It depends on who you play. That could be an ongoing show.
Yeah. And they can't be much louder than this first.
Right. Yeah, it'd be really interesting.
And they can't be much louder than Rudy.
Chief, please do.
There's a first down.
Add one comment.
Recently, within, I would say, the last four to five weeks, we did receive a complaint from a citizen of the Saratoga subdivision regarding sound amplification on the property there. Because they put the turf field in there, and it's become a multi-purpose usage field, they're doing more announcing on the field. So, just the sound amplification is causing some consternation from some of the surrounding residents. We did forward that to Superintendent Hitchens, and she's addressed it, I think, individually with that citizen. But that was something we had not experienced before when it was a grass field. But obviously, the usage is up now, and this, I would expect that if we do pyrotechnics out there, you're going to get increased noise complaints, especially with the, they have a pretty prolific offense, so if they're doing an after score, like you've already indicated, they're going to be, there's going to be a lot of noise out there.
Well, as I've told them, I think that if we're going to have fireworks, that, that the fireworks have to be the gentle kind that just go up and color the sky, but don't make a lot of boom, 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 booms. Because I think that would really get the ire of some of the neighbors there pretty quick.
And the fact that with the field house, as close as it is to the field and how big it is, the back of the BFAC center, the echo out there is going to be huge off that. I know they did a little improvement to the sound system last year, so that's why I can see the noise complaints. And because it's a multi-use field now, they can use it any night of the week they want. So, there are people out there announcing, so it, I'm sure it's going to get louder.
Probably bounces out that turf more, too.
Yeah, I'm sure that that doesn't.
Well, this is, this is still a small town in many respects, and I, as I told the folks that talk to me, they all know who all you are, especially Alderman Wolf, and so I said. And so I said, well, you're, it's not like you're going to come down and talk to a bunch of strangers. They're all people that, you know, some of them live nearby, everybody's there representing the community, and they have the best interests of the town at, at heart. And I said, you're going to have my city staff sitting there advising them what we should and shouldn't allow, and so they've, they're engaged, and I think they're going to actively be wanting to come sometime in the next month on a Tuesday. I told them, I said, well, you know, we do all this at the committee of the home meetings where you can have kind of a free and open-ended discussion, full of questions and demonstrations, and maybe you should get some video or something, you could show them how loud and how pretty these fireworks are, and tell them exactly, they've got spots in mind where they think they could fire these, and it would be not endangering anybody, and the spread of the firework would be right there, I think at the south end of the field someplace is where they want to do this. So, anyway, that one's coming. The other one I want to share with you is, is that the police department is assisting me, and we are getting ready to make a presentation here some night about bicycle riding in Batavia. We've had some issues with it this year already, and we're out doing some stuff. And I want to give this enough notice, because I certainly want to invite the Batavia Bike Commission to be here and have a part of the discussion and add to their comments to what, you know, we're going to present and show and whatever have you. So just so you know, those are two subjects that will be coming before you in the near term, is fireworks at the high school football games, and, you know, bicycle riding in Batavia as we know it, and how we think it needs to be kind of refined in some respects. So, could be an interesting summer.
Well, every time we play Geneva, it could be larger than the Fourth of July, so might have to get a permit for that game.
Good point.
Okay with that. Send them up in a Viking ship and it breaks in half.
Burn it and send it back north.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else from others? No? We'll move on to executive session. Let's bargain. They don't affect any action tonight after the executive session?
Move, we go into executive session?
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
You going to hang around for executive?
That won't put them during lacrosse season.
No. No. Just lock it up.